My apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome. It's good to see everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight on January 22nd, 2024, meeting of the Westerville City School Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printout agendas are available for our guests, or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, select Board of Education, and then follow the board docs link to our current meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.03. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll call? The roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here. And will you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And 3.01?
Yeah.
Is School Board Recognition?
It is School Board Recognition Month every January in Ohio. And, you know, I've only been in the district for just over four months, and I could tell you that I am so impressed with this school board, that the level of passion you have for serving kids, for doing what's right, for being transparent and open with the community, just incredible working with you. I'm grateful to be a part. But I've only been with you for four months. So what I'm going to do is turn it over to Nicole, who's going to share with the community about some of all, you know, all the other great things that you've done in your service here. So Nicole?
Yeah, so for the board, we did get crumble cookies just as a sweet treat, just to help recognize for School Board Appreciation Month. And then also, OSBA does have some certificates. So after we talk, we'd like for everybody to go out front, get their certificate, we'll get a picture, and, you know, post it to all the things. So just, I have a few comments that I wrote down to share with you all. So every January, we recognize people who have made a commitment to serving their communities as school board members in the state of Ohio. We have the great fortune to have a stellar group of people who are here to serve our school community currently and in the past. I personally want to thank you and for all that you do. I've watched each of you commit to doing the hard work to ensure that all students in Westerville City Schools are prepared to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live, as our mission states. I would also like to highlight just some of the things, and this is a very small portion of the things that I have witnessed, that our board has prioritized and championed over the last several years. We've opened two new schools, Minerva Park Middle School and Minerva France Elementary, to reduce overcrowding in buildings and to allow students to attend schools closer to their homes. We've renovated many of our schools to address needed repairs and ensure students have comfortable environments in which to learn. We've increased access to technology for our students throughout all of our school buildings. We've increased safety and security in all of our school buildings. We've expanded mental health services across the district to ensure we are supporting the whole child. We've expanded special education staffing, expanded all-day kindergarten opportunities, expanded preschool opportunities, expanded magnet school opportunities. And we've also expanded the curriculum in our middle school programming to have offerings that spark student interest and reduce study hall times. And there are many, many more things that I don't have on this list because, for the sake of time, but I am continually impressed by the thoughtfulness each of you display as you carry out your service to our school community. I consider it a privilege and an honor to be part of a team that benefits from your leadership and your governance. Thank you all for everything that you do. You're truly appreciated. Can we?
Now if you'll join us up front. So every year, Ohio School Board sends certificates to honor school board members. And Louise? Kristy? There we go.
Wait, how do you guys hold yours? Sorry.
Where were we being cut?
Bless the land.
All right. There we go again.
All right, great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you to all your
Thank you.
For your service and all your
It's okay. No, it wasn't close enough.
Thank you. That was very kind. 4.01, really excited to hear tonight from a Westerville South student, Kadija Sahid. Sorry, I got nervous. And I told you, I'm not, I get nervous with names. Kadija Sahid, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. You look good. You look nice and beautiful. So my name's Kadija Sahid. And in that picture, you can see me and my host, the momma, and my little bro Dexter. So I'm going to share my presentation about my country, Kenya. So you can see Kenya is a country located at the east coast of Africa. And this is our flag. The black on the top represents the black people in my country. The whites represent peace in our country. The red represents the blood shed during independence, to fight for independence. And the green shows the vegetation in our country. And the shield in the middle shows our charity to defend our country anytime needed. So have you guys watched, like? Yeah, The Lion King. It was actually based in Swahili words. Hakuna Matata means no problem. Even Simba, the King Simba, means lion in Swahili. So I'm going to start with Kenya as a general first. Kenya is made up of approximately 53 million people. Yeah, that's a lot. And then the main industry in Kenya is the coffee and tea. And we're the leading producers. So it means that Kenya, we have cool and wet climates. And the landscape consists of vast plains, there are mountains, there's swamps, we have an ocean, the whole package. So some of the myths I've heard about Kenya, they say that Kenya is always hot. That's not true. We just have spring and summer all through the year. So it was my first time seeing snow. I was so happy. They also say that lions roam the streets in Kenya, and that's not true at all. They stay at reservations or in the wildlife, and you can't see a lion at all at the streets. It'll be cool to see one every day. And also, they say we don't have cars. We have to run everywhere. That's wild. We have public transport. We have cars. We have trains. We have airplanes, everything. So in Kenya, we have 42 tribes. And Pokomo culture, which is my tribe, it's one of the 42, and we all speak different languages. So we're two different languages in Kenya. So I'm going to talk about my culture, my community. So I'm going to start with some of the misconceptions about my culture. The first say that Pokomo are part of the Majikenda. But in Kenya, we have three groups that came into Kenya at first. That was the Bantu, the Niloans, and the Kushtis. And the Pokomo are part of the Bantu's. And the Bantu's are divided into different, according to their geographic regions, like the coastal Bantu's, the central Bantu's, and the northern Bantu's. The coastal Bantu's have Pokomo, Majikenda, and Taka. So people mostly, they can differentiate between the Pokomo and the Majikenda. They can differentiate that. And Pokomo natives eat crocodile meat. That's not true. Because they say that because we live near the Tana River, and sometimes it floods and there are a lot of crocodiles. So they think to reduce the number of crocodiles, we eat them. But we don't. They also say that Pokomo only reside in the coastal area, but after, like, most of the group is in the coastal area, but they spread out in Kenya. Okay, so Pokomo, as they say, are part of the Bantu's. And the Bantu's came from Congo. They traveled through Uganda, and they entered Kenya and settled at Shungaiya. And then the gala came and dispersed us. We moved near the Tana River, and we settled there. So the British came to our country. They said it's all beautiful. And they decided to colonize us. And with, after finding our independence, they took away some of our important artifacts. There's this drum called the Ngaji Drum, which was rumored that if you hit it, it sounds like the roar of a lion. And then we'll just stop everything they're doing and go through to where the drum is. But now it's in the British Museum. So I'm going to start with the common Pokomo traditions. There, you can see, I started with the dishes. I love food. The first one is Samaki, which is Swahili for fish. We mostly got our fish from the Tana River. We sun dried them, we roasted them, and then we put them in like soup, and we eat it. The second one is called Nkumbo, which is green, green banana. We peel them off, we put them in like a bubble, we boil them, and then we put onions, tomatoes, and oil, and then it's all good. The third one, it's called Ugali and Kale. Ugali is mainly made of corn flour in hot water, and they just tag, and then it becomes hardened, it becomes hardened, and then you just eat it, kale, with tomatoes and onions. Now we have the clothes. The first picture shows like, that was during a ceremony. The women usually wear like one clothing from the shoulder to the feet. And the girls, during the olden times, used to wear one clothing from the, covering the chest, and another from the waist up to the knees. But now they wear modern clothes like this one. This is called Abubui. It's mostly worn by Muslim women. And this is called a hijab. It's used to cover my hair. The second one shows the men. The men used to wear one clothing that covered from the waist up to their ankles. So different communities in Kenya have their own different rites of passage. In my community, we have four rites of passage. The first one being birth. A child is born, and they have this whole like ceremony, and then they have to stay indoors to avoid evil eyes. And also, the woman can't go outside the house because she's considered unclean or unpure for 40 days. And then after the 40 days, the child is named and have a big ceremony again. The second one is circumcision. When a child is born, if it's a boy, they used to circumcise the boy at the age, like, seven days after the child is born. And we don't do girls' circumcision. So the child, the boy child is circumcised seven days after being born. And then there's marriage. This time, like, men used to like run away with the brides and then come back with them after paying the dowry, and then they go and get married now. It's a whole, it's a whole thing. They run away with the bride, and then they pay the dowry after. That's, that's called Kwekwea. And then there's finally death. They mourn, and like, the women, to show their grief and sorrow, sometimes they shave their hair to show their grief and sorrow. And Pokomo are usually counseled by a council of elders, and their work usually is to like settle disputes in family or like theft of cattle. We were mostly cultivators, but we also had cattle. And they also blessed the warriors before they got to war by sprinkling animal blood on them so they can win on their wars. So some of the myths or superstitions in my community. So the Pokomo believe that if you have a twitch, or sometimes you feel like it's a heartbeat in your eye, it means you're going to see something unexpected or unusual in your day. Or when you get a sore throat, it means that you spat on a dirty place. So don't spit anywhere. Or when you're like arranging the dishes, or you're washing the dishes, and then a spoon falls, it means you're going to, you should expect a visitor or a guest is coming. And the last one, when your palm gets, it does get itchy, right? Like your palm. When it's the right hand, they say it means you're going to get money. But if it's the left, you're going to lose or give away money. So I pray it's your right hand itching. Okay, the fun facts about my community. So like I said, we are cultivators. So sometimes we have this great harvest. So we decide to celebrate, and we just light a fire at night, like a campfire, and then everyone in the community just comes. And you see around the campfire, the elders can like tell stories and all, people sing, people dance. And sometimes the songs, and the stories, they just are created on impulse, just like that. They just create it. And they just tell it. So as I said, I'm an exchange student, and I came through YFU. And I won a scholarship through YES, which stands for Youth and Exchange Study Program. And YFU is Youth for Understanding. And if you have any questions about hosting or exchange students, you can ask my momma. That's all for now. Thank you. And I also wanted to thank you, Westerville City Board, for allowing me to enjoy this experience and see America. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot something. I brought some Kenyan sweets.
Oh.
Do you want them?
Yeah, sure. That would be very kind.
Okay.
Well, you might not want to eat them until the end of the meeting, really.
Thank you.
It's up to you guys. We can pass them out to you now? Probably good.
Now, okay, that's fine. And how long are you here till? How long, how long's your exchange program?
I'm supposed to do that at June. I'm an academic here.
Okay. Thank you for sharing your culture with us.
It's my pleasure.
She's delightful.
So these are baobab seeds that are covered in sugar. And then just suck on them, and then just peel them off.
Oh, okay. So you're supposed to? Thank you.
I think I'll wait you. I'm not spitting seeds. I'm not rude to spit seeds. So can you buy Kenya food anywhere around here? Are there stores that?
I mostly do Indian stores. Oh, it's mostly like Indian based.
So you've got these seeds that are covered in some different seeds. And you don't swallow the seed, and you just kind of suck off the Cool. Interesting. Very kind. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Yeah, she did a great job. Yeah.
Thank you.
And don't feel like you have to say something. Oh, you have the chance, yes.
Thank you again. All right. You ready? Okay, so 5.01. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, January 8th of 2024, as presented, in a second, please?
So moved?
Second. Ms. Marshall? Oh, yeah. Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any conversation or changes? No, thank you. Okay.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And we have no public comments at this time. So moving to 7.01. May I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for November and December of 2023? The financial reports list off, it's ending in November and December of 2023. So may I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second. Ms. Marshall? Thank you, President Meyer, and members of the board. So we do have two months to go over this month because we had one meeting in December. So like you mentioned, we had one over November and December. So just real quick, a note, on page three of the financial reports, we do have a correction that we've posted on them. There was a typo for Fund 019, which is our local grants. The, it's 0199167. So it's fiscal year 2024, and it's a grant for Hope Squad. And there is a typo in the account code. It has, it should be WEC for Westerville Education Challenge, but it's WEF. So we will get that corrected. We're very close out to December, so we can't go back and correct. We've just made a note in the board minutes, excuse me, on the report that's on the board agenda. And we'll have it correct for January's reports going forward. I do, I do just want to take a moment and kind of highlight how fortunate we are to have Westerville Education Challenge to support our Hope Squad program in each of our three high schools. As a matter of fact, this week is Hope Week, and so all three of our high schools, the Hope Squad, they were handing out hot chocolate and greeting students this morning, first thing, as they started their day. And we're also partnering with WEC to bring Hope Squad to our middle schools beginning next year. So it's a very exciting program. I think we're very fortunate to have. And now, I'll get to my financial report, but I apologize for the typo, and we will get that fixed going forward. For the month of November, so November 30th, 2023, for the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of about $98 million, and year-to-date expenditures of $79.2 million. And we ended with an unencumbered general fund balance of $188 million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $131.7 million, year-to-date expenditures for all funds of $138.6 million. And we ended with unencumbered fund balance for all funds totaled at $216.8 million. And then for December, so just a reminder, our fiscal year begins July 1st and goes through June 30th. So December is right at the half of our year for the fiscal year. So for general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of $102.8 million, and year-to-date expenditures of $100.8 million. And we ended with a general fund unencumbered fund balance of $171 million. And for all funds, we ended with year-to-date receipts for the month of December at $142 million, and year-to-date expenditures of $167.2 million, with an unencumbered fund balance for all funds at $198.7 million. And that's all I have. Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And 7.02, may I have a motion in a second to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D1 and Board Policy 6320?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall, would you like to talk to her? Tracy?
Thank you again. So these are what we call then-and-now purchase orders. We have two on this agenda. Then-and-now purchase order is where we have a purchase order that was opened after goods or services were ordered, which is usually indicated by the invoice date. Any purchase of $3,000 or greater in this situation requires the board approval and order fresh to issue payments. So we have one invoice for Sterling Paper, and in this case, we did have a purchase order opened. It was inadvertently closed by one of our secretaries due to some confusion with the new accounting system. And she didn't realize it until it was too late. And then the other one is for REM Communications from Transportation for Cameras for New Vans that were purchased. The vendor used the date of the quote for the invoice date. Instead of the date, the quote was actually accepted. So it wasn't really worth the time to go back and have them correct the invoice date. They had already invoiced it. So I do recommend the board approve these purchases for payment. The funds were budgeted for appropriately. Any questions or discussions? Okay, Ms. Marshall? Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And is it okay if we take the personal consent agenda as one? Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve 8.01 through 8.15?
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Cooper?
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Dr. Clark. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. Additionally, there are three MOUs and three settlement agreements with our WEA for your consideration this evening. With regards to retirements, we have one staff member on this evening's agenda. Mark Patrick will be retiring at the end of next month with 28 years of service to our district. As members of the board, you have probably seen Mark around this building, taking care of many of the needs that our students downstairs have, as well as our district administrators here on this level. We appreciate Mark's dedication to our students and staff and wish him the best in his years of retirement. As noted, we have three MOUs with our WEA for your approval this evening. The first outlines our mutual understanding of the use of replacement contracts for full-time certified hires during the remainder of the current school year. The second defines additional compensation for school counselors when taking on additional student duties for a colleague who is out on long-term leave when a qualified substitute is not available. And the third, the last MOU clarifies the intent of language with regard to obligatory professional training modules specifically through the use of public school works. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the one MOU with the school counselors. And I'm assuming someone was out. So how much did they fill in? Like, what was that caseload like for them?
Yeah, so we did have a counselor out on maternity leave, one of our high schools with four counselors. So the other three covered the responsibilities of the students within that building. There was actually a substitute that was a qualified retired substitute, retired counselor, I should say, so was still licensed. So for that period of time, there was no additional coverage that was needed. There was a period of time from October until the beginning of December. So there was about a six-week period of time in which that retired counselor was not able to cover. So we did not have a qualified counselor available for that time. So these three custodians, or sorry, these three counselors did then assign the students within and carried out those responsibilities. They logged their individual time spent with students from that other counselor so that they did have the evidence and verification for us to be able to approve that extra time.
Okay. And then I have one other question. So on the 8.9, employment supplemental licenses? So we have an athletic director in the spring, and then the same, and a track coach are the same. So I'm just wondering how the track coach also is the athletic director?
So I would need to check on the athletic director's name. Is it middle school level?
It is.
Okay. And so many of our middle school athletic directors do handle responsibilities for a part of time, and then they also may have other supplementals. So the athletic director position, I don't know if that's a full-time, I don't have that right in front of me right now. If that's a full-time athletic director for the middle school?
So I do, I do have that information. So the athletic director position is split between two separate people. So it's a .5 FTE for the person who's also doing the track coach. So the other athletic director is actually So the other athletic director is actually overseeing the track.
Gotcha.
For the spring.
It is pretty common practice in our middle schools that the athletic directors take turns and while they're not the athletic director, they may coach during that time period.
And then they can still. So how does, okay, so then.
So the other person.
Family member would report to the athletic director, not?
To the other athletic director.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that athletic director is covering softball and then the other athletic director is covering track.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Have a good night.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And nine point zero one, may I have a motion in a second to approve the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six academic calendar? It's hard to believe we're already there.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
I don't believe we heard anything from anybody on the calendar. This is the second and final reading.
Right, but no feedback?
No, I don't believe we received any feedback yet.
Okay.
Nope. It says no.
All right. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And ten point zero one, um, this is uh. Oh my gosh, do I need a?
First reading.
So um. Uh, is a first reading of policy one or eleven thirty, conflict of interest? And Ms. Marshall, could you talk to us about this?
Um, yeah, so this is an update. We received a recommendation from our auditors during the course of the audit this past year um to update our conflict of interest policy. Uh, this update amends our policy to align with the recommendation from our auditors. It clarifies who the policy applies to as well as requires those who have potential conflicts to disclose them to the school district. It also clarifies prohibitions for federal awards and any conflict resulting from those.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. And then eleven point zero one, donations. This is always a really fun time too. Um, so may I have a motion in a second to approve donations as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments?
Always very grateful.
No, please.
Just never ceases to amaze me the generosity of our community. They are incredibly generous and uh very helpful to the school district.
Yes, absolutely.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And eleven point zero two, may I have a motion in a second to approve Gallagher benefits incorporated as the district's benefits broker and consultant and authorize the treasurer CFO to enter into a contract for services beginning on February first of two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Yes, so the insurance trust committee uh sent out requests for proposal on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with a deadline of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We received proposals from seven firms. Of the seven, uh, the insurance trust committee interviewed four firms on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And uh the insurance trust committee had made the recommendation uh for Gallagher benefits. So Gallagher actually worked with the district previously prior to our current um insurance broker and consultant. The uh contract that we would enter into will uh start on February first uh here next week. It's actually going through our legal review right now. Um, it would provide for approximately a three-year term. And each proposal that we received varied greatly based on the fees. Um, and it all kind of surrounded commissions. So we don't allow our vendor to receive commission from the insurance providers for medical, dental, and vision. And so this is a fee-based proposal that we, we will have here. And I've also included their presentation to the committee in the agenda if you wanna see some stuff. So we will be gaining um for their actuarial services, they have compliance attorney, their overall status in the industry, which will help with market leverage and hopefully cost containment in the future.
Um, just to uh help everyone understand who goes, who helps make that decision, can you just talk about the insurance trust committee real quick?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so our insurance trust committee is made up of uh leadership from all of our employee groups or all of our associations and union groups. And then um we also have HR representative, uh, some representatives from my office um that are part of that.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And eleven point zero three, may I have a motion in a second to approve resolution from practicality of transportation?
So moved.
Second. And welcome, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, President Meyer, Ms. Vice President Altman, members of the board. Good evening, Ms. Marshall and Dr. Clark. Before you this evening is a resolution declaring impracticality to transport the list of identified students before you. As Ohio law allows for public schools to determine the impracticality of transportation after considerations of several factors, such as the cost of providing transportation and the number of students to be transported. On November twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, this board passed a resolution declaring fifty-five students impractical for transportation. And before you this evening is a list containing eleven additional students that our department has deemed as impractical to transport. Ohio uh Revised Code thirty-three twenty-seven oh two allows for this opportunity for the board to make this declaration of impracticality for this list of eleven students. And approving this resolution would allow the district to offer payment in lieu of transportation in the manner provided by this Ohio Revised Code. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce determines the payment in lieu amount set forth each fiscal year or each school year. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have this evening.
Questions are coming? Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And twelve point zero one, public comments. We have none at the moment. So moving along to thirteen point zero one, more comments. Who would like to? To go first?
I will. I just want to go back to the consent agenda and um comment on Mr. Patrick. I am delighted for him as he retires, but I promised him I would say something nice. So, and that was not a difficult promise to make. He is always so kind and so helpful. I know when I walk into this building, he'll be there and he smiles and he speaks and he always remembers so much personal information about everyone he speaks with. And I also know that when I walk in here, I'm gonna be proud of the way this building looks. And I thank him for all the years that he has spent um lifting up Westerville City Schools to be the best that it can be within his role and within his remarkable personality. So I thank Mark and I am delighted for you, Mark, and it was easy to say something nice.
Do you mind? Okay, I just wanna thank you again, Ms. Khadija Said, uh, for sharing your culture with us tonight. I really appreciated the presentation. I echo Nancy's comments and I just wanna say thanks to the Westerville Education Challenge. Um, it's really awesome that Hope Squad's gonna be expanding to the middle school. Um, and it's been fun watching it at the high school. So that's it. Thank you. Um, and then with that, fourteen point zero one, the board will meet in special session on Thursday, January twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four at seven P M. at City Hall, which is twenty-one South State Street. And may I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Six forty-two.